Kevin, that's him now. Session, he flies the flag of the way. A bunch of agents to the flag.
America, enjoy the Republic, which stands one nation under God, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call me Lou.
Alden Buoyan.
Here.
Garika.
Here.
Hollerin.
Here.
Johnson.
Here.
Lewis.
Here.
Moranti.
Here.
Miza.
Here.
Rosenthal.
Sarar.
Here.
Volo.
Here.
Presenty Pietro.
Here.
For President.
Can I have a motion to dispense with the reading of the minutes of the June 10th, two meetings, June 18th and June 27th meetings, place them all on file. A first, is that Rob?
Mm-hmm.
And a second? Sure shot. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? A motion to dispose, not a motion to pass. A motion to dispense with the reading of the City Treasurer's report as of June 30th and place it on file. Can I have an introduction? Introduction, oh, sure shot, and a second. Irene. All in favor signify please by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Committee reports, the copies are on your desks. Can I have an introduction? Someone? Kamal? Second? Devon? All in favor please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion carries. Okay, let's get to the list of bills. Any questions?
Is there any kind of difference on that one?
The usual suspects. Oh yeah, that's just, yeah. First payment to the Lacy Taylor, the JIW feasibility study. But other than that, I don't think so. Can I have a introduction? Pay the bills. Kalvin, and a second? Kamal? All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Miza.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro. Carry.
Okay. The first resolution, disappointing Commissioner Deeds. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Garika.
That's good.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Miza.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
No vote.
Carry.
Next resolution is a revised resolution to provide the city share of Dunham Warehouse feasibility study. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Miza.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
No vote.
Carry.
Resolution, next resolution accepts a donation of asset on behalf of the Hudson Fire Department from Shaun's Run for $250,000. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Miza.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
No vote.
Carry.
The next resolution is the compensation for the Organization for the Cities Arts, Entertainment and Tourism Awards. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis, I'm sorry.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Miza.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
No vote.
Carry.
The next resolution accepts the natural resources in the total space inventory for the city of Hudson. Can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Miza.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
No vote.
Carry.
The next resolution, adopt the New York State Sexual harassment and discrimination policy for the city. Roll call vote, please.
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Miza.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
No vote.
Quick question.
Yes?
Did we find out whether the youth center employees will have to go through the same training? Who, yes?
We've already scheduled doing that. We're going through voluntarily. Yep. Okay. The next resolution, authorize the mayor to apply for and receive funding on the 2019 Community Development Block Grant Program. Okay, roll call vote, please.
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Miza.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro. Carry.
Okay. First, new resolution approves the firefighting listing pursuit to the service award program. As you know, we have a program where when a fireman earns a certain amount of service, he participates in a modest retirement plan. May I have an introduction and a second? Devon and Rob, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Miza.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
No vote.
Carry.
The next resolution is to issue requests for proposals, design and construction oversight services in connection with the Bridge District Connectivity Project. This is the big one that we have under, that the city has under the DRI. Excuse me. And this is just authorizing Chazen, actually, I'm sorry, the city to request proposals, which we will do, of course, with the help of the Chazen company. Can I have an introduction and a second, please? Someone? Kamal? Second? Tiffany? Roll call vote, please.
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Miza.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
No vote.
Carry.
The next resolution is supporting an application for funding application for environmental protection fund parks program, partly for the Riverfront Park and partly for the Seventh Street Park Improvement Plan. You'll notice I did not sign this because it's sort of unclear where it came from and what it's doing, but it won't hurt us to put it forward. Can I have an introduction and a second?
Quick question.
Sure.
Where's the match come from?
The match comes from the fund balance and the Finance Committee, I believe, approved that today.
Is that good?
Mm-hmm.
Yes.
We all leave the square for the finance thing.
So improvements like the moving benches and placing them or new ones, things of that nature, what type of improvements?
Not clear.
They're gonna fix still?
There'll be more. I'm sorry, go ahead.
What's the problem? Water display in the middle of the park, is that gonna be fixed? Like what improvement? Who put the resolution through?
Mayor?
Yes, you mentioned earlier the connectivity project. It's part of the DRI. This is one opportunity that we have to address the waterfront park. It's not part of the DRI and possibly as part of the connectivity program for the riverfront park and how the new bridge, the new bridge will affect it and possibly a new traffic pattern through the riverfront park. It's just a good chance, I felt, I thought, to look at the entire thing, including the riverfront park, as part of the DRI. The Seventh Street Park's been talked about for years as far as redoing it and this is just a, an opportunity for us to evaluate what we can do to integrate that part better into the community. Obviously, we're gonna find out, there are not a lot of grants for these kind of things. We don't know what our chances are, but it's worth asking to see if there is something that we can do. You know, there's been so much talk about Seventh Street Park and the need to redo that and this would give us some money to evaluate what our options are and the exact same thing with the riverfront park and especially in relationship to the millions of dollars from the connectivity project from the DRI.
One quick question there. What, like what improvements, like for example, down the street, you know, for many, many years, the people have been requesting a ramp in the park.
That's a different thing. That's one of our.
Some asking you, what improvements will be made in this park?
We don't know yet. This will start the, this will start the coming back to us with some suggestions. The Promenade Hill Park we has actually dealt with today, Promenade Hill, with the RFQ and talking and deciding upon some people to start that process that will include the ramp, Tiffany. This waterfront park, this waterfront park, we have a bridge, we have the Dunham Warehouse, but absolutely no plans to incorporate any of that into a real plan for that. So this will also help, hopefully, assist financially with the planner that we're hoping to give and then it can add this to that project. So it's all incorporated, the city can look from Second Street down to the actual waterfront instead of just Front Street.
I think just saying this would be part of a future design, so if you awarded the grant, we would see the specifics of that grant, that would come back to the council and then similar, I guess in a similar fashion to what we've done with the DRI, you'd be involved each step of the process on what the design's gonna be, who the design consultant's gonna be, how it's gonna roll out, but this would actually give you money to help fund doing that investigation.
May I have an introduction and a second? First, introduction. Rob, second. Rich, roll call vote, please. Excuse me, roll call vote, please.
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Garika.
I'm not sure. I'm just. I'm. The city's natural 7500, right? I'm just chuckling, but I'm gonna find out before I know it. Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Miza.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
No vote.
Carry.
The next resolution provides the city share of Dunham Warehouse stabilization grant. This is just an interfund loan. Any questions? How much is money we'll get back for the general fund once the project is done?
Just one note, Heather did say that the state said that.
Yes.
We're gonna just fix the 68, not the 90.
Yes, we have a good reason we have to guard.
On the 18, you were doing?
Perhaps.
I'm sorry. So where it says, where it is, it says either or, like it's a balance of either 68,360 or 94,360. It's gonna be 68,360 because they took the full $52,000 of the feasibility study and applied it. So our initial upfront is gonna be the lower of the 200s. That's why she put either or.
Can I have an introduction? Rob, second. Kalvin, roll call vote, please.
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Miza.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
No vote.
Carry.
The next, excuse me, is applying for a grant from numerous sources. This is an ongoing project that we all know about, the Storm Sewer Separation Project and this is handled by DPW. Any questions? Can I have an introduction and a second, please? Irene and Rich, roll call vote, please.
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Miza.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
No vote.
Carry.
The next grant application is a repeat of last year's attempt to get a parking study done. Can I have an introduction and a second? Are there any questions?
So is that the match for the city going through the fund balance?
Oh yeah, it did, in the primary, I did. Sorry, I didn't mention that.
Well, I was just, I was just asking, I was telling about this grant, so I think it would help the council if you can enlighten me on what you told me.
Yeah, Tiffany's concern was you just passed some legislation, you know, opening up or not requiring people to have parking requirements, so how does this fit in? And what I pointed out to her was, you know, there may be even a greater need now that we're not gonna require private landowners to have their own parking to at least start the investigatory process of what may be some feasible means from the city moving forward to kind of address parking moving forward because it will become a municipal responsibility, you know, really by nature because you're now saying, you know, landowner X doesn't have to do it. So A, do we have a parking issue in certain areas of the city? And so what may be the best way to address that from a municipal standpoint as opposed to putting it out back to a certain property manager?
And there's no guarantee, this probably is just.
Yeah, this is just the grant application itself. We'll have to wait and see. We'll see.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand what you were asking, I didn't understand. It was about the parking law. Just pass my head because it's already.
So tonight's vote is just allowing the mayor to apply, there's no money attached to it tonight?
Correct.
Would only be if it was granted.
We have some time.
Yep. Can I, an introduction? Irene, second. Rich, roll call vote, please.
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Garika.
Our attorneys advise. Hollerin. Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Miza.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
No vote.
Carry.
And the last resolution adjusts the sewer fund budget, even though it says use of fund balance, this doesn't mean the general fund balance, it's the sewer fund balance, so it's within its own fund balance. It's on fund balance, correct.
Is that the one, right?
Yeah.
And direct that now?
No, it's.
It's that line either, so that's.
Yeah, that makes it clear from there. Can I have an introduction and a second, please? Rich, second? Irene, roll call vote, please.
Alden Buoyan.
Aye.
Excuse me. Garika.
Aye.
Hollerin.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Lewis.
Aye.
Moranti.
Aye.
Miza.
Aye.
Sarar.
Aye.
Volo.
Aye.
Presenty Pietro.
Johnson.
Carry.
I'd like to announce, I don't know if it's been done yet, but already on the common council site are the three new laws that are being considered. These are draft proposals, they'll soon be posted on the front page of the city, tomorrow, I live in the, of the city website. And we're inviting comments. This is sort of an experiment, putting those laws out there, there's not a lot of complaint later on if they do get passed. If you'd like to comment, we've received a couple of comments already. One is about short-term rentals and two are about a means of accomplishing the renovation of the city sidewalks. So I invite you all, people watching as well, to look at them, read them and offer some suggestions. Next, the chief is here to address the recent episode, or I'm not sure what to call it, considering that happened in Hudson yesterday. I don't really know about it, so you can just take over.
So folks that don't know, it was about this time, about this time last night, yesterday, on North Second Street, a member of our community was viciously beaten by another subject. He received extensive injuries to his head and was eventually brought up to Albany Medical, where he is expected to survive, but has been admitted. So the good news is that around 5:50 this evening, the subject that we identified, we located near the train tracks between Spring Street and over behind, let's say, the funeral parlor, and we brought him into custody. He will be charged with a felony of assault, a very serious felony, and we're going to recommend, the DA's gonna recommend no bail and hopefully he'll be admitted to the Albany County Jail tonight and our community will be safe from this fellow for a while. The city of Hudson, City Court has no jurisdiction on felonies of this elevation, so it'll go to the county court. Getting to the crux of the matter here is there's been a lot out in the public regarding whether this was a bias-related crime. I assure you that the subject will be held on the assault second degree and we, by bringing it up to the county level felony, we have a lot of tools at our disposal for grand jury for further investigation and we always have the ability to upgrade the charge. So folks that might not know, a bias-related crime or hate crime brings with it a higher charge. It automatically bumps up an assault second to a higher degree of felony and also imposes different sentencing rules. So it's considered very, very serious to charge with a hate crime. Now, there's a lot of discussion about whether this was a hate crime or not. I will tell you right now that we have not charged yet. It doesn't mean that it won't be down the road, but we're doing an investigation. The victim gave us a statement. We have witness statements. We have members of our community that took video and shared it with us, which is wonderful, very helpful. We don't want to press the victim in the current state too much with too extensive of an interrogation, but we will get to all the facts of this matter and we will file the appropriate charges. So I want folks to know that this man is in custody, that our victim will recover and we will file the appropriate charges and I believe our community is safe from this person doing this again. So thank you for your time. If anyone has any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Chief, who ultimately determines whether it's a bias crime or not?
Okay, there's no, nothing in the law that says a charge, a bias crime in the penal law. What'll happen is the district attorney would upgrade the prosecution if he feels the facts are there. And he, and he just left. We've been talking all day on this matter. So as we develop fact, develop information, it'll lead us to the appropriate charge. As for right now, he's being charged with assault in the second degree, okay, which is a felony and will be arraigned shortly at Hudson City Court.
Thank you, chief.
Thank you, sir.
Any other questions?
Okay, thank you for your time, everybody. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Any questions?
Thank you, man.
Old business, new business from the council? Anybody in the council have any?
Rich, to, to add to that, um, we've been working with them, working with them today. And so if, if anyone does feel that they are, are happening the victim of a hate crime, the state does have a hotline that you can call, um, 1-888-392-3644. Or you can text the word HATE to 81336. So if anyone does feel that they are a victim of a hate crime, the state has a hotline number that's available to recall.
Now, to the council, from the public, any comments or questions? Yes, sir.
Bill Houston, State Street, Hudson. I'm wondering why the, the code enforcement department doesn't have its own public meeting like all the other departments?
Because.
I know he's involved with the.
Because, uh, to the question, there, there's no oversight from the council. All these committees are council meetings that we have.
So why is there a D.P.W. meeting with Rob, the, the head there, answering questions, telling us what's going on, but Craig Hay doesn't have to get in front of the public and tell us what he's doing every month? Isn't this how we keep our departments and our department heads accountable?
I understand the question.
Yeah.
Andy, would you, would you have an answer?
Well, yeah, I mean, um, Craig is a public officer, so he has a certain jurisdiction that he oversees in enforcing the code. So as opposed to, um, someone like our Public Works Department, which requires and relies upon this council making certain budgetary decisions, um, throughout the city. That doesn't exist with the Code Enforcement Office. They enforce the code. That's what they're duty-bound to do. And so.
Does he report to the mayor?
Yes.
So that's who code reports to.
So, so you make a, an example of the D.P.W. What about, uh, police chief? The police chief answers questions every month. Is it the same?
I mean, it's, it's not really the same because, again, Craig has a very narrow.
What about the youth department? They have a question in time.
Yeah, Craig has a very narrow, specific thing that he's overseeing. So, you know, he's under the auspices of the mayor. And in addition, he's, you know, conducting investigations and, and, you know, dealing with individual property matters. So, um, you know, that's, that's why I'm assuming there, you know, that's why he doesn't have a, quote-unquote, a committee to report to.
Who? Nor our commissioner.
It seems awfully strange. It's a building department. The town has issues with buildings, you know, many, many issues. It just seems odd that we can't find out what he's doing all month. And I'm trying to, I'm wondering how the code is amended. Who, who ultimately does that? Or what's the process?
We do it. And then it goes through the process, which includes, uh, I think we have to write to the planning board of the city as well as the planning board of the county for an advisory opinion. And then we have to have public hearings, and then.
So can anybody bring up a suggestion for change and you guys discuss it? From the public as well?
Sure.
Okay. Well, I'd like to talk about.
We have to put it forward.
Yeah, I understand. I'd like to talk about something that, just for a moment. It's frustrating to me. And I, I think, well, let me just say that I think, uh, City Hall, the government, I think you have to strive to be democratic and consistent, right? That's what we all want in any organization. And when it comes to the, uh, department meetings, they're not consistent at all, and I don't think it's democratic at all. I'll just make examples here. There's two types of meetings in terms of scheduling. One is either unlimited, and it doesn't have any meeting that's following it.
Can I stand here for a second? Each committee chair determines the nature of their meeting. It's not something we, you know, there's no imposed standard that they all have to meet other than the standard meeting rules. And there are no rules about time limits or time restraints. That's determined by committee chairman. So if you have a given complaint about a given committee, I think it'd be best handled by approaching the committee chair.
How could that be?
A D.P.W. meeting doesn't even allow public comment. I don't get it. The, the legal committee is unlimited. I talked to police chief Moore last month for 10 minutes. I asked him five questions. And, you know, back and forth, but he can't do it at D.P.W.? Public works. I'm just saying, you're inconsistent. And I, I don't, how. It's, is it an issue with, with the committee here? Do they care?
The chair, the chair had to get the time changed.
The point is gonna be in the hour and a half more.
I'm trying to answer your question, so give me a second. The zoning, um, board meets soon after it. So there's that time limitation. I tried to move them around, but that's just the way it is.
And that's something.
Can you let, Irene?
Well, I'm not gonna be answered, Bill, but, um, the, uh, that's something I hope we can change next year.
Yes.
Either by putting it on a different night, but for this term, that's, that's how it is. And I would say that it is inconsistent with other meetings to have someone come and criticize the chair, that's fine. Criticize the department head, that's, that's fine, even better maybe. But, um, to, to also denigrate the work that the, the men and women of D.P.W. does, does, it just does, doesn't move the ball an inch. It doesn't do anything.
Right.
And they're not there, and I.
In support of what you're saying, Irene, uh, each committee chair determines, uh, how much public comment they have to take. It's not, it's not written into the rules, in any rules, that there has to be public comment at a given meeting. That's determined by the chair. So, you know, you have no right by law to speak at a, a committee meeting.
But you have the right to speak now, we're listening.
Yeah, sure.
And we're listening.
Well, it just doesn't make any sense to me, that's all. If you guys can't do anything about it, then I have nothing else to say.
Okay. Any other public comments? Motion to adjourn, perhaps?
Motion to adjourn.
Second. Moment there. Any votes?
No, let it sit.